I'd like to call the order. The Charter Township of Oxford Planning Commission Regular Meeting scheduled for Thursday, April 11th, 2019. If you would, please rise and pay your respects to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Make note of the roll, Mr. Secretary?
Noted.
And Mr. Knopf is excused. Item four, approval of the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda of the regular planning commission meeting dated April 11th, 2019.
Second.
I'll second.
Moved by Mr. Berger, seconded by Mr. Spiz, I think.
A little faster.
Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Item five, approval of the minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the planning commission regular meeting minutes of March 28th, 2019.
I'll second.
The move by Mr. Curtis, seconded by Mr. Knoll. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion passes. Item six, public comments on items not scheduled for public hearing or on this agenda. Is there anyone out in the public wishing to speak? Yes, ma'am, please come up to the lectern, state your name, your address. You have three minutes to address the chairman.
Kathy Warfield, 1220 East Davison Lake Road, Metamora, Michigan, which is in Oxford. I'm just making comment about the minute meeting notes. It says, "Public comments on items not scheduled for public hearing on the agenda." And it is noted, "Public comments began at 7:01 PM. Comments were received from seven persons ended at 7:16 PM." This is not appropriate or legal. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
We talked about this at the last meeting, and they still, the minute meetings are, they're even lacking more this week. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else out in the audience wishing to speak? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to Commissioner's comments. Mr. Spiz?
None.
Mr. Hunwick?
None.
Mr. Berger?
No, I have none at this time.
Mr. Knoll?
Just a couple of things. Last night, Board of Trustees meeting, there was a group of people talking about the dirt roads, the bumps and the holes and the chloride treatment. So there is a concern in the township about the maintenance and care of the dirt roads. The other thing that was at the meeting that was very interesting that I thought was Algen spoke about the OCTV, about how the videos and the DVDs are made and the integrity of those, of how that they are transmitted electronically from this meeting to the Internet, and if there is an electronic compromise and they're not even put on the Internet. They try to fix the sound problems the best they can, but those minutes that are put on the Internet are actual minutes that happened in the meetings. So it's a federal and state law. And then the OCTV has their new facility. I've been through it. It's a very nice facility. So if you have a chance to go out to the Parks and Rec, the facility's there, and it's an updated, state-of-the-art facility. The last thing is, is that when are we going to get spring? That's my closing comment.
Mr. Curtis?
The text, the ordinance review, the text amendments that were recommended for approval were pulled off the agenda last night. On April 2nd, we received a request for a public hearing through the legislative body, and we removed it from the agenda, so they won't be talked about again at the Township Board until May, at which time there'll be a public hearing before it to talk about those text amendments.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I got a question. You said legislative body. Which legislative body?
The trustees.
The Board of Trustees?
Board of Trustees, yes.
Let's move to item nine, which there is none unfinished business. Item 10, new business preliminary site plan applicant Trident. Is the applicant here?
Yes.
Okay. Do you want to come up to the lectern, state your name, your address, and then give us a five to 10-minute synopsis as to what the plans are?
Very good. Good evening. My name is John Thompson with PEA. I'm representing Trident Crest III LLC this evening. Also with me is Bob Tedesco from Silverado Homes and Matt McCarty from Silverado Homes. Silverado Homes is partnering with Trident Crest on this project. Brief description of the site, we have approximately a 30-acre parcel. It's located on the south side of Drainer Road, east of La Pier. We're between the Oxford Hills Country Club and Crossroads for Youth Community. We're across the street from Lake Aaron, AKA Mud Lake, AKA Tullmore Lake. So take your pick, and depending on what you want to search, you'll find the three different names. But little history on the project, Trident Crest received preliminary plat approval for three parcels, or three projects, three phase projects as one development. So the preliminary plat approval back in February of 2002. This was for 100 acres. The property we're looking at now, plus two parcels to the north and along Tullmore Lake. So what we're looking at today would be Phase Three of that original preliminary plat called The Woods of Tullmore. The old plat consisted of 48 lots, but it included relocating Drainer Road. The preliminary plat is previously approved, is now null and void, with the agreement with both the developer as well as the township. So we're coming for you tonight to talk about the new Woods of Tullmore. That's 50 units on 30 acres. Meets all the requirements, the R1 zoning requirement, zoning district, and we're proposing public roads. A few items that we wanted to discuss, and I'll just, I'll mention them now, and then we can discuss them again after the consultant reviews, if you'd like. We would respectfully ask for a waiver on a tree survey. The entire parcel is woodland, so we could simply write woodland if need be, but I did want to clarify tree survey versus woodland identification. Second, I don't know if it's allowable or not, but one of the review items was we would require to go to the ZBA for a waiver on a second access point, and I wasn't sure, I just wanted to clarify if that was something the PC could waive versus go to the ZBA. And that's related to the proposed EVA, which would be any access, or the reason for that would be any access point over 20 units would require second access. We're proposing to do an emergency vehicle access that's in tandem with a safety path. The safety path currently is shown would come in from the west because of the existing wetland area. We're proposing to bring that into the site rather than continue it along the right-of-way at Drainer Road. Reasons for that is the existing topography, the gravel road, the fact that if the road is paved in the future, that safety path would have to be removed and replaced anyways. So we thought the best way to do it would be to bring the path, as you can see on the plan there now, between lots nine and 10, into the site and around through the site and then back out at the entrance. With that, the proposed EVA, we're showing a 12-foot paved road. We indicated that we'd have knocked-down bollards that would be there. The fire marshal would prefer to see a gate, which we could do in lieu. The reason we went with breakaway bollards was to create a pedestrian-friendly walking space, but we could make that work if need be. As far as long-term maintenance, we would include that in the HOA requirements to snowplow and maintain the grass and trees, whatever necessary. Lastly, as one of the other alternatives, we'd like to discuss possibly paying in lieu to the township for the entire path system. Again, we know we've got this path going to nowhere on either side of our property. We've got a road that's going to be improved, hopefully, in the near future. We've got a wetlands that's encroaching into and out of the right-of-way system. So one of the options that we would entertain if the township would approve it is just doing a payment in lieu of the safety path at this point. With that, I think that gives a nice summary of our proposal. You can either answer any questions or wait for the consultant reviews.
Okay. You guys have seen all the consultant reports?
Yes.
And the sheriff and fire marshal?
Yes.
Okay. Why don't we review the planner's report?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Do you want him to stay up there?
We'll call him up if needed. Long time, Mr. Chair.
Right. Yes, so he addressed some of the, some of our concerns as outlined in our review letter. I do want to just go over a couple of them, just to clarify and discuss a little bit further. I will say, in our natural resources portion of the review, which John referenced, the, I do call out that the applicant should provide a tree survey as part of this application, and that is not actually required. It is, I use that term, however, the ordinance says that the location of trees in wooded areas should be identified on-site, and so if there is reference to the existing features on the existing features plan, that woodland, that it's a wooded site, that would satisfy that. For access and circulation, we do have two concerns here, and as I mentioned, for Section 11.3(c), the ordinance does state that road serving more than 20 lots or units shall have two connections to an adjacent public or private roadway. The ordinance does not call out whether these are emergency access. It just clarifies them as connections. So that would require to deviate from that requirement. It does go on further, the ordinance does go on further to state that appeals pursuant to the article may be sought from the ZBA. So if that was, connection was determined to be a roadway, then that, then a variance would be required for that. Also, for access and circulation, we do mention that the condition of Drainer Road there is in very poor condition, and that the applicant should address and open the discussion, and I know the, you know, Planning Commission may have questions about this as well, about the future of that road and what the addition of vehicles for 50 additional homes will look like. And the applicant may address possible, the possibility of upgrading this road and whether that be gravel or paved, those options. We recommend that those options be explored.
Mm-hmm.
In addition to that, there were a couple of things that we called out that will be reviewed at final site plan, landscaping, lighting certainly should be mentioned. The safety path was another concern, and for the township's safety path requirement, we found that the option of taking a safety path through the neighborhood is a creative solution. However, we didn't, we don't find that to be in the intent of the path to travel along the road. And I know there are a couple of alternatives that could be put in place. We thought that the, running the path along the wood, along, excuse me, the wetland that runs along Drainer is another solution that should be considered, and paving just along, as close and as adjacent to Drainer as possible there to provide that connection. Let me see. I think that's it.
Engineering view?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, we have a few comments. Let me, I'm going to start off by saying that we are recommending the preliminary site plan approval. There's some items that we're going to have to work through as the project progresses. One thing right off the bat, I just wasn't sure if this was proposed as a subdivision or a condominium. I'm assuming it's going to be a condominium, but it wasn't stated anywhere on the plans. If that is the case with the condominium, it just adds some additional items at the next phase because the master D's bylaws, things like that are required by the Planning Commission. Let's see. Let me just scroll through my list here. I was curious as to what was happening with the portion of land that is on the north side of Drainer Road. There's a triangular piece that's kind of cut off up there. I didn't know if they were keeping that as open space, if that's just going to remain, you know, obviously it's not going to be a lot, if they were going to deed it over to the Road Commission, but there is a small area of land up there. So I was curious as to what was happening with that. And again, a condominium plan would identify that. They did submit a preliminary grading plan. We have no objections to that. There are a few retaining walls along some of the wetland areas, and up in the northwest corner, there's a pump station that's going to have a pretty significant wall near that that would probably require the seal of a structural engineer because of the height of that wall. Landscaping, again, is preliminary, but generally, we don't allow landscaping with any of the utility easements. In this case, it would be some sanitary because they're showing the sanitary outside of the road right-of-way. So we just have to work on that and get the placement of those trees in the right locations. Sanitary sewer-wise, there is an existing sanitary sewer. It runs down from the Big Villa property. It was installed with Greg Christopher, runs through the crossroads. There's two pump stations, and then on Drainer Road, there is capacity in that sewer. They're proposing to install a heat and gravity sewer to a pump station that's going to exist on their site, and then pump it into that force main. So we have no problems with that. With regards to the water, right now, there is no water at the site, public water. We are currently working on a plan that is going to bring it from the middle school down through the crossroads property to their site. And we're kind of on the same timeline there. We're close to having our design complete and submitted, submitting it for our permits. So the intent is to have it there at the time that they're ready to, you know, tie into it. Again, that's just a coordination thing. With regards to the storm sewer, they're proposing to collect it all on-site, run it through a pre-treatment structure, and then outlet it into, take your choice of the names of the lake on the north side of Drainer Road. Again, we have no objections to that. Obviously, the crossing beneath Drainer Road, they'd need some permits from the Road Commission, not only for that, for some of the other improvements that they're making. But again, no objections. With regards to pavement, sidewalks, and curbing, Mr. Thompson did express that these are going to be public roads. It wasn't clearly identified, but that means that everything's going to be under the jurisdiction of the Road Commission, so we're not going to have a whole lot to say on that one now. They'll be working that with them, so that's fine. As Lauren mentioned, the current condition of Drainer Road is not great. Obviously, we'd love to see it paved. The cost is probably prohibitive, but to see some sort of improvements on Drainer Road would be beneficial. Again, just a comment, more than anything. The pathway, the safety path that goes along there, they're asking for a waiver on that, and we did prepare a cost estimate. It wasn't submitted to you because they didn't specifically note that in their application, but you're probably looking, because of the helical piers and things that we put in on some of our other projects, we use those in our cost estimate, and they're probably looking upwards of $150,000 to $175,000 for a, for the entirety of that path, based on a preliminary cost estimate that we put together. CBA and the safety path cash in lieu. So I think that, at this point, that's about all that I have. But again, we are recommending preliminary site plan approval, and then we can work through the, you know, work through the details at the next step.
Right. Just note, the Oakland County Sheriff requests stopper yield signs there at the ends of the roads. I think we've got, Chief, did you have anything for them? I know there was a couple of your notes here.
Did you find it on there? Yes, right there. Number seven, I think it was, right there. One thing to require throughout the development would be no parking on the hydrant side all the way through the development, so that way, there's always a lane of traffic that's open, so there's no parking out in the streets. And it would have to be signs posted to state that. Secondly, emergency access, the fire department is not in favor of this kind of a emergency exit because of the problems we have, that they're never maintained. Vegetation-wise, always grows over because nobody goes out and trims the trees back and the brush back, so eventually, it turns to be a path that nobody can even find. At winter time, nobody plows the snow, so you would have a pile of snow, probably two to three feet high in the subdivision, you know, to have to jump over, and then when you get out by the road, you'd have all the road plowing everything, so you'd end up having another burr of snow out by the road. So it's always been a concern of ours that they're, it's a nice idea, and it's a way to work, but they don't work because nobody maintains them. And then even, they mentioned that they were trying to get it into the Homeowners Association to have to maintain it that way, but then from the township side of it, I'm not sure what teeth or who's going to be walking out there to maintain or check to make sure that they're maintaining it, and then the enforcement of it. That would be the concern that I would have. And then whenever they do the street name to make sure they get submitted so that we can approve it, to make sure it doesn't conflict with anything else that we have in the township. Not a fan of the breakaway post because, again, in the wintertime, once wood gets wet and cold and frozen, it doesn't snap off as easily, and I would really not hate to scratch a bumper on a $600,000 truck coming through there. So I prefer a gate with a Knox padlock on it that we could have access to it. I'm sure there's room, when you look at the plan, that the gate could actually go out, if they're going to use that as a safety path across the front, the gate could actually go on the other, on the street side of the safety path, so that wouldn't conflict with them coming in and out of there.
All right. Thank you. I think that's the lion's share of it, right? Parks and Rec was okay. No issues. So is there any member of the public wishing to speak on this particular application? Okay. Seeing none, let's move to Commissioner member discussion. Jack? I'm sorry. Go ahead, Jack.
Oh, you have to go down rotation?
Sure. I'm sure. I'll start off by saying, to address some improvements to Drainer Road, we are, we, the Township Water and Sewer Committee, has met with this developer because what we're doing is looping our water system from behind the middle school out to Drainer Road. This is the portion we can do in 2019. So we've worked with the developer, and the developer's verbally agreed to entertain in working with the township, in conjunction with the township, to either gravel or kind of grade and improve Drainer Road to get to the subdivision. That was done by Tom Turnbull at the meeting, and he said, "I'd be glad to help you improve Drainer Road." So if we need to get something in writing with him, I don't think, at this time, at a preliminary site plan, we can ask for something, but he's agreed to do that because the nature of getting him in there to sell a lot, the road needs to be improved. He understands that, and he promised us he'd be in conjunction with that.
Before we move on, Jack, if I may, Mr. Chair, is there a potential that we could take advantage of the tri-party funding to help pave that road from that direction instead of just gravel it through the township also?
I think you addressed that to the chair, right?
I did address it to the chair, but sidebar to Mr. Curtis.
That has not been investigated because a tidbit that's coming up in 2020 is the reconstruction of M24, and the placement of the west-to-east water main will come through that area of Drainer Road. So what will be damaged or lack of damage, we don't know where it's going to go. It hasn't been designed yet, and we felt that the gravelling to improve the road would improve it to the site, but once that water main comes from the west to the east to join up with the water main we're putting in for this subdivision and looping, we don't know what damage will be done, where it's going. So we, we, the Water and Sewer Committee, met with these folks and said, "Would you entertain improving it to the point that it's drivable?" So we didn't say, "Hey, should we investigate tri-party funds? Should we look at it?" None of that was done because we knew it would get tore up when the water came from the west to the east.
All the way to 24?
Yes. Secondly, my concern was the tree survey, and Lauren addressed that. I don't know why that's in Section 12.3(b). As in other subdivisions, they did a tree survey, and then you go out there and every tree is gone. We have no tree ordinance, so it's kind of fruitless to do one if it's, goes to nowhere. That's the last one I had.
Mr. Knoll?
The safety paths, is there any way that it could go behind lots one, two, three, four, and five, between the back of the house and the wetlands?
Fifty. And there's not enough grade to put a water there.
Mr. Chair?
So you have to put a retaining wall? If it were to go in, you'd have to put a retaining wall?
Yeah, it has to be bigger than the one Jim referenced.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Eleven feet?
Can you come up the lectern? Yep, sorry.
I'm sure if you're going to wait till the end.
So everybody can hear.
So with respect to the safety path running behind the pond/regulated wetland area, we looked at that early on to see if that was a viable option, and unfortunately, the grading through there drops about 15 feet off of the road on the backside of the pond. So we couldn't feasibly put a path around there without literally putting in about a 15-foot-high wall all the way around that wetland area.
Yeah. Okay. The corner, what was the intent with the corner on the northeast side of the property across Drainer?
At this time, nothing. It's going to be common element. We talked about possibly doing a park area over there for the residents, but at this time, we're, we'll put it into a condominium as open space.
Then the mechanical storm water treatment that's underneath the safety path, for the emergency safety path?
Yes.
You have an elevation problem, the reason you can't go the south side?
I'm, I don't follow, I'm sorry.
The storm water goes north side under Drainer into the lake?
Yes.
Can the storm water go into the wetlands, let wetlands use as a filter?
No. Unfortunately, as part of the original preliminary plat, the developer proceeded to conservation to actually obtain conservation easements, even though they didn't build the site. So at this point, conservation easements are already in place along the whole entire south side, and we can't touch it, walk in it, add water to it, anything.
What is your experience using those mechanical storm water treatment systems?
As long as they're maintained, they do well.
So that would be up to the Homeowners Association to maintain that? With the road situation the way it is, and this is just a thought, because if you, there's no sense of putting asphalt down, cost as well as it's going to be tore up, could be tore up, could the Homeowners Association take over the chloride from the paved road down for a certain period of time until the water system's in, everything's settled there to help with the, maintain the road?
That's a public right-of-way. I don't know that we could have the homeowners be responsible for repairing, maintaining a public road. I don't know there's a vehicle to do that. I think the developer's definitely willing to put some money into the fund in order to grade and gravel, but I'm not sure how that mechanism would work to...
There is a chloride program within Oxford, and that was up in the Board of Directors meeting last night. That would be something that I would look into.
I can guarantee everybody living on that road is going to conflict if they don't have it, yes.
So I can certainly talk to them about that, adding that into...
That would be a far easier compromise, in my mind, than asphalt.
Definitely.
I'm very concerned about the emergency right-of-way. That, is there a study been done that we can't put an entrance or exit on the west side?
No.
That, is there a study been done that we can't put an entrance or exit on the west side?
No.
There's not been a study, or no, we can't do it?
There has not been a study.
Okay. So, you have to give up a lot, is what we're kind of talking? There's no way to, oh, because of the 80-foot?
Right.
You're tight in there, aren't you?
Yes, sir.
I might jump back in.
Okay. Mr. Burr?
Some of the concerns have already been talked about. I need to ask Jim something real quick. How did you come up with $175,000 for the cost estimate of the path? And what mechan, I mean, what, I mean, were you just utilizing it based on millennial footage and then all the borings and everything necessary to put it in through the wetland area and stuff?
Yeah, I mean, I could show it to you. I didn't, I didn't share it with the, with this PC.
But you went all the way. You went, took it through the whole, the whole concept of the plan, right?
It's the entire, it's the entire length, 1,225 feet, including 200 lineal feet of boardwalk, includes tree clearing and removal, grading, a couple of ADA domes, asphalt at about $100 a ton.
Well, I heard a comment earlier, I believe from the petitioner's representative, that they would be willing to put money up in lieu of that path.
Correct.
So, would it be based on your figures?
Yep. That, that's the way that the ordinance reads.
Is that, is that agreeable? I heard no from the audience, so I'm asking, I guess, John...
We'd have to look at it. I couldn't tell you at this point till we talk to the rest of the team, but I think we'd want to sit down and maybe negotiate with Mr. Sharp a little bit more on the pricing.
Well, that's why I tried to ask Mr. Sharp how he came up with this pricing, and then the next question was, is that something you had already discussed? And obviously not.
No, we had not.
Okay. All right. Thanks, John. I have a similar concern, I think, of Mr. Noel, that I would, I don't like variances granted for ingress and egress typically. You'd have to ask for variance based on the ordinance with 20, more than 20 lots in this development. And I did ask Bob Tedesco earlier if, as a representative of this project too, that would he be willing to give up a lot? Of course, nobody wants to give up anything, so they already gave up a couple. I just feel like the radius points, when this pathway comes in, when you look at it on the south end of that pathway, the radius points to come into that roadway and everything, they're not the same as if it would have been a road approach, you know what I mean? So, like a big truck, like, well, Mr. Schultz might come in there with a big pumper or something like that to make emergency access. He, he might have a little difficulty making a turn onto a roadway with that kind of configuration in there, as only a pathway. So, I really...
Eighty degrees.
Well, I don't, we're not, I don't need, I don't want, I don't want to get into the radius.
Right.
So, I was really asking if a lot could be given up to get the 60-foot-wide road right-of-way with, that would then be maintained by the public, not the association, wouldn't have anything to do with HOA dues and all that stuff. What is the typical width of the sidewalk through that development?
Five foot.
Five foot. It's a concrete walk?
Correct.
Okay, concrete. See, I'd be, I'd be more inclined to say, I'd rather work with you and have that path go do what it does in your original design. At first, I wasn't, but then after I heard some of the other discussion this evening, and then to possibly take the emergency access path and turn it into a roadway, eliminating a lot, which would be my suggestion, and I could work with the idea of keeping that path and then coming through the neighborhood based on those values, and maybe work with the developer through Mr. Sharp, and what the value of that path really has in conjunction in lieu of money of. And then, I really don't want to have to have you seek and get a variance. I'd rather not have a variance granted to do this development. I'd rather have it work where it meets the criteria. If this, if this is truly a site condominium site, I don't know how it was presented exactly when Mr. Sharp brought that comment up earlier. I wasn't, I wasn't sure what it was either. But as a benefit, I think, to the township, it would be better if it was a road right-of-way. That's just my opinion. That's me talking. I don't know what the rest of the planning commission members. I'm very happy to see this happen, if it can, to help get that 16-inch water main across this property and back out to M24 eventually in the future to get this loop. I appreciate Mr. Chief Schultz's comments, Mr. Schultz's comments from the fire department, based on what we've had in the past as experience from these kinds of situations for emergency ingress and egress. The other question I have, and I'm not real familiar with them, and maybe Mr. Sharp can help answer that question too. Do we have any mechanical treatment systems in place currently in the township that you know of for stormwater management?
Yes, we have several. We have Hubbard Spring.
Hubbard Spring.
We have them at the new Leos Coney.
The Leos Coney. Do they get stormwater up there? That's all I'm saying. Okay.
Just put it in. We let them, we, we reduce the size of the ponds because of the sand, but they still had to put in the, the treatment. I'm, I'm sure that there's a few others, but those are just two recent ones that I can think of.
Clearview one in the village.
Okay. And so, in your opinion, there, we haven't had any difficulties?
We have not. As Mr. Thompson indicated, as long as they're maintained and...
Well, I, I heard that part too. That would be the responsibility of the homeowners association?
That's correct.
Because that's privately owned, right?
Storm sewer is privately owned, correct.
Until it reaches, until it reaches what point? It's always, it's all private? Even in the public?
It would be all private, even in the public road right-of-way. Now, they're going to have to, if they're doing public roadways, they're going to have to deal with the road commission and make sure they meet their requirements, but generally it's still going to be maintained by the HOA.
Okay. That's all I have for a minute.
We have, we have agreements, Tom.
I'm sorry?
When we get, when we have those, you know, along with the easements, we also have maintenance agreements.
Filed?
That are filed, recorded.
Registered, live or page number.
Absolutely. Yep. And so, this would be no different than that.
So, they would, and that, but it becomes the township's enforcement reliability?
It is. So, if there's a problem, you get a call from a homeowner or somebody from the township, you know, the building official, somebody notices something going wrong, then you go through the proper procedures to inform the HOA and, you know, get it cleaned out.
We've not yet had to do any of that.
We have not.
Well, that's part of my question. I just wondered if we've had to have anything to do with enforcement on that issue. Okay, we have not. All right.
Mr. Homewick? Do you have any questions?
The only, I just, the, I think I misunderstood what he said about the emergency access. That's a 12-foot-wide paved access point?
Correct.
Oh, I heard five feet. I was just wondering where that came from.
On sites are typical subdivision sidewalk.
Mr. Spiz?
Yeah, Mr. Homewick, Commissioner Homewick brought up a point, so that, that emergency access point is going to be paved.
Correct.
So, it's a 12-foot paved, because I know the chief was concerned about it not being maintained, et cetera, et cetera. Okay. But I still have concerns. I still personally would like to see a second entrance also, from a safety perspective, to have more, more than one exit point for the fire department and all the resident safety in that, in that location. Second point relative to the safety path, you know, from a, thinking more from a homeowner's perspective, would I want that path to come in through my subdivision and go back out? Is my thought. You know, we asked, you have a sidewalk in there. Usually, that's for the residents of the neighborhood. How often do you have people that would potentially use that safety path on the outside? I know it's going to nowhere at this point, but potentially in the future, if that whole area does grow, you could potentially have people routing through that subdivision to use that safety path.
Yeah, to be clear, you're, you're talking about having come down that access point to the inside sidewalk, right?
Exactly. So, those are my comments.
Okay. So, yeah, there seems to be a couple of things. Go ahead, John.
Mr. Sharp, we've, we've had roads like Sanders Road, that they don't have culverts in some area and water collecting. I know that, I believe, I know that there's not any culverts along some of these areas on Drainer Road. Would that be something that is, needs to be looked at or is looked at, or is it not something that we need to address?
When you say culverts, you mean like underneath the driveways?
Around the, around the main entrance?
Yeah.
And possibly the emergency entrance or, and/or a second entrance? Because that goes pretty steep.
Yes, there, there should be culverts there, and I'm sure that the, that Mr. Thompson is going to incorporate that. You know, this is just site plan, so they haven't included all the improvements on there. I'm sure that the road commission is going to require that. It depends on the drainage scheme and everything. They are setting their entrance and the current emergency access kind of at the high points of the site, so it's going to break towards those wetlands and in the opposite direction, but those would be things, because it's going to be in the public right-of-way, that the road commission would look at.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Burr? Mr. Chair, I heard Mr. Spiz talk about people walking through the subdivision on pathways, and I guess, in my opinion, I, and I drive through Waterstone quite frequently, I see people that even park and come in to walk on pathways through that subdivision. And I see that they can take any of those sidewalks off any of those paths and go through that subdivision anywhere they want. I, I'm not really opposed to having that small section of that sidewalk become part of that pathway. Like I said, if we could work something out to get a proper ingress and egress without having to ask for a variance on this plan. So, I, I would be more than willing to work with the petitioner in regards to that aspect and get my ingress and egress to meet and comply with the ordinance rather than ask for a variance. That's my opinion.
Yep. No, that's what I want to try to get to his opinion, because then we're going to leave it in the ZBA's hands.
Maybe.
Maybe not.
They understand what we think. Right? Okay. Any other commissioner comments?
So, we're not stuck on a safety path yet, and we're not stuck on paying for it in lieu of.
No.
If, if you had a payment in lieu of, of the safety path construction in a motion to be approved, the amount could be modified and determined as the township engineer. Then you could always go back and install it if it was too much money coming into the subdivision and then going back out.
Sure.
Is that feasible?
I think so.
My question would be then is, we want to tackle this twice. Once is to do a payment in lieu of motion for the safety path as an option for preliminary site plan approval. Let them work it out, and we can use as modified the amount determined by the township engineer. And would that be amicable?
Yes.
Okay. And then we have some unresolved issues in the township planner and the engineer. Is there any other additional unresolved items that we have?
The only thing I really see is that access point.
Okay, we can address that at final site plan then?
The access?
Yes.
I'd like to hear the petitioner comment then.
So, let me ask the question again, maybe in a different way. Based on the way I understand the ordinance, two access points are required for over 20 lots. However, the ordinance doesn't specify what those two access points are.
True.
Being a legal 60-foot right-of-way or any other, any other alternative, like emergency vehicle access point. So, I guess my thought would be that, or the question I have is, does this really need to go to the ZBA, or is this an item the planning commission can rule on? As there are two points of access, so I wouldn't have a reason to go to the ZBA. The question becomes, what is a valid secondary access point?
Mr. Chair?
What I would, I'm sorry.
Unless you want to keep going, I'll just...
Oh, I'm going to make it worse or better?
It specifically says roads.
Okay.
It says, "Roads serving more than 20 lots or units shall have two connections," so there shall be road connections.
Can I call that a road? An emergency vehicle roadway? So, I mean, I have a 12-foot lane, which is a standard one-foot lane. I could increase the radiuses on the south side such that it meets fire truck radius. If it doesn't, I know the radius points that we had on the north side did indeed meet the, the fire truck radius. If we simply increase the radius, I don't know if somebody could slide that screen over a little bit again? Sorry. So, so the flare, the flare section at the end of the driveway, if I could increase that radius to meet a 30-foot or 25 or 30-foot radius, then we could make sure that we have fire access from both directions. And then, we could work with the township attorney with regards to language to allow some type of hammer, some type of enforcement, if that doesn't get maintained. I mean, the, just like stormwater treatment device, the responsibility is to the HOA. If they fail to do so, the township can step in and assess the community. We could come up with some kind of language like that with the township attorney to, similar to a stormwater maintenance agreement.
Mr. Burr?
Mr. Chair, I feel that, you know, a stormwater treatment facility and a device such that if it fails, then it's going to cause the people that live there a problem.
Correct.
And they're going to be more adamant to then take care of that problem. Not so much as would they be concerned to take care of something that's just considered 12-foot-wide pathway, not a roadway. I'm not going to call it a roadway yet, because it wouldn't be designed typically as a roadway with proper drainage and everything else, maybe, I don't know. So, and I know that we've had problems in the past. I don't like breakaway things. I don't like expensive vehicles having to go in and punch stuff down to get through and stuff like that. So, I'm still adamant on probably, in my mind, working with them diligently on the pathway. I don't have a problem with that. I don't have a problem with, you know, almost every aspect of this plan, other than the roadway and not granting a variance. I don't want to set a precedence to grant the variance on the property. That's just me, though.
Okay. Okay. I'm trying to dig through all this. What we did out on Baldwin and Stanton was because the road only had one entrance, was we made a boulevard in it.
Yeah, you did. I'm not opposed to that either, but can he do it with that configuration?
I don't, I don't know. That's a question I'm asking right now.
Go ahead and ask it.
There's not enough room in there. You could shrink up one of the lots, two of the lots and put an extended boulevard coming through the front.
I can certainly look at it, but the, I don't believe there's enough depth in the lots to come up with an 86-foot right-of-way.
In keeping your square footage?
Yeah. 1, 2, and 3 are all 12,000 square feet.
That's kind of what I thought. That's why you pie-shaped them to get that 12,000.
That's fine. If you, if you had enough room to put a boulevard in, how long by ordinance would the boulevard be?
We'd extend it to the intersection.
I could work with that.
I don't see how that makes a difference.
He might be giving up something again. He might be giving up property again.
Yeah.
Right. So, he's going to give up property one place or shape or another. But I'd rather give up a lot where I could keep the radius of protection from that curve, where I get the proper identification of site distance from the county standards to an approach permit instead of a pathway permit to the east of this property from that entrance point.
Mr. Spiz?
I have a question for the planner. You mentioned roads earlier for that second entryway. Would a one-way, one-way road be considered a road? An entry point? I know it's not ingress/egress, but in an emergency situation, it could be used as either.
Well, the ordinance specifies that the easement width shall be no less than 60 feet.
Okay.
So, I mean, I suppose you could make it one way, but...
So, if you're going that way, you have room for it to be both?
Yeah. I don't know if it specifies that it must be two ways.
We'll design that to hold fire trucks, so we'll be doing a full-depth 8, 9-inch asphalt road, so it's, it's, it's not going to be a, not going to be an issue with respect to fire access or maintenance.
Well, then I, I want to make sure there's clarity on something. You're going to build the roads to county standards, but are they going to be then county responsibility, or they're just going to be maintained private?
Public county responsibility.
Maintain public county responsibility.
We'll dedicate... We'll dedicate.
So if that pathway was a county responsibility and not a pathway, the pathway's gonna be maintained by the HOA.
Correct.
But if it's a roadway, it gets maintained by the county.
Correct.
And takes the burden away from the HOA.
Well, but my concern would be, just like the chief said, let's say during the winter, county comes in and plows the road. I know it's rare, but they do come in and plow the roads.
Yeah.
Um, who's gonna plow that path? Cause homeowners associations now can not, now not gonna do the roads. They'd have to do that separately.
They would. They'd have to contract to do it.
That's true.
That's the part I'm getting to. It doesn't normally get maintained. I've just seen it in many other instances.
Well, me too. I mean, given with many home, HOAs, it's, they don't, they're all different.
I'm just not adamant. If you're gonna talk about it any other way, then I'd, I'd rather see it be a road.
I agree.
Okay.
Just to clear, the interior loop, the road is gonna be a county road?
Right.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah.
All of it.
All of it.
So they're gonna come by that path, the 12-foot path, a variance.
Right.
Now some homeowners.
Well, there's no incentive for them to clear it, cause if it's a private road, then they would be clearing it themselves. They would add the path.
But it's not gonna be a road.
Yeah, I get it.
Well, I, I know my HOA, because of the fact that the county only comes by once in a while, we plow our own roads and streets and anyways, it's part of our agreement, so.
You're rare.
Um, really?
Yes.
Um, so that's, uh, so we do that because we can't get out. We, we run it through the HOA, um, cause we know the county's gonna be there next week.
Good.
Well, it's gonna be anyway, in terms of the path.
The county maintains.
Why not let the homeowners maintain it? Why not make it private?
The roads?
Yeah.
Um.
Then it'd still be a road.
Well, then you would have at least an opportunity that they'll clear the path. If they're gonna clear the road, then they will clear the path. That's all I'm saying. If they're gonna be contracted out to clear the road, whoever they contract with, that would have to include the path.
Well, that's not for me to decide.
Well, I'm just saying if it's, it's a private road.
At this point, I think we were, we were set up to go with, uh, with a public road system, so with public maintenance and.
Thousand.
Replacement.
And the county, county.
Let me ask the chief a question. How, how do you feel about that?
Getting your vehicles into that one and getting back out into the circle, the inner circle they've got?
75 and 75.
Is that feasible?
75.
Really?
Again, if it's maintained, you know, it's guaranteed it's plowed out every single time the road gets plowed out. If the radiuses on the inside are changed to fit the, you know, the regulation radius, you're referred to the international fire code, which basically has the radiuses, um, right in the code as far as what they have to be. So they have to comply with that anyhow.
Yeah, alright.
Put the gate out there. I mean, it's workable like that, but again, it's got to be maintained. Otherwise, it's not, it's not functional.
Yeah.
12-foot is a normal winglet, normal lane width for a normal road anyhow. If it's gonna be hard, you know, asphalt depth, the whole bit, it's doable. But again, it's gotta be maintained. That's the, the sticking point.
Chief, how is, what, do you ever have issues down at, those of Oxford on Indian Lake Road? What happens down there? Cause they do have a gate down there.
It's not maintained at all hardly. I mean, it's, I, I, they've never maintained it yet, ever.
Would you take my $600,000 fire truck through there?
If I had to, I'd go over the top of something, but I'm saying that most of the time, my ambulance isn't gonna make it though.
My question, yeah.
Ambulances aren't four-wheel drive unless township wants to buy me $250,000 ambulance as a weekly four-wheel drive, but it's not gonna happen. That's the main, is the main kicker is just getting in and out of there. The whole reason this, a good example of this is out off of Sanders, um, Molina, I believe is the road.
Molina?
We had a power line come down in a storm two years ago, probably about four, four houses into the subdivision. Power line came down all the way across the street between the houses. Literally right up next to the house, I had, you know, parking, I had fire. Big huge spruce tree caught on a fire right next to the, the house. The whole thing's go up in 30 mile an hour winds, flames. One of the wires was hanging probably three feet off the ground, so none of us could even walk to the other side of the wires if we needed to to help fight the fire. Meantime, the rest of the entire subdivision of close to 50 homes absolutely was shut off from me getting back to them or them getting out. There was absolutely no way to get, get past that with wires. So that's why I'm always a sticking point on every development that comes in, based on that, is we gotta make sure we're prepared for the, and again, these power lines are gonna be running pretty close to that same thing too, so.
On the ground back there?
That's the issue. Just make sure we got access.
This is all underground, isn't it?
Within the development, it probably would be, but everything on Drainer Road is overhead.
Everything on Drainer Road is, would be up above.
So the entrances would be overhead, so.
Well, I need to ask, uh, Mr. Thompson something. It, is, uh, is the location of what you've put in now for the secondary access point to this property due to the grades of, or elevation or what, I mean, why was that chosen between lots nine and 10?
Well, we, the answer is yes. Um, the, we actually looked at, um, Mr. Sharp and I were working on where we should bring the water main in, and we wanted the EVA point to match the water main location, um, which we're actually looking between 12 and 13, I think.
I think that's what it says currently.
The, was there a name on there?
Yeah, there's one on the plan.
Oh, so that's where I, that's where I put it originally. Uh, the water main's going between 12 and 13.
Yeah.
Um, so we were gonna put the EVA access and the pa, you know, cause this is a safety path slash EVA. Um, we were gonna put that access point between 12 and 13 also. Problem was that it was too steep. So we had to bring it counterclockwise to nine and 10 where we could actually get a grade that was, um, less than 8%.
That's what I assumed. That's why you chose that locate.
So, and then what we did was we mirrored the storm outlet through that same route, so we created a common pedestrian crossing, EVA, and storm outlet.
So in your opinion, could you have a 60-foot wide road right-of-way through that area?
Could we? Yes. Um, but we were just doing the math on that, and the reality is, we're not gonna lose one lot, we're gonna lose two lots.
Well, I was gonna bring something up, but I don't know. This is not a PUD, it's a site condominium?
That is correct.
Okay, cause there's no room for bargaining value when it's a site condominium versus a PUD, cause I was talking to Mr. Nold, and we kinda abyssed on something. If we were to reduce a few lots by five feet instead of 80-foot, maybe we could squeeze those down and do something with that and make that 60-foot wide road right-of-way work through there, but I don't think that we can do that either under this kind of a plan. Can we, Lauren? Reduce the width of a lot?
ZBA?
Two, two.
I'm not trying to take his lots away. I'm just trying to get my.
We're trying to make this all work.
I'm just trying to get my public road.
So, look.
We were just saying, I think, I mean, you're showing 30 feet for that access point, and the lots are 80 feet wide, and you only required 60 for a.
Yeah.
So it would, you would lose like, you know, half a lot. I mean, it would be a whole lot.
We need 80 foot as our minimum width, and that's a corner lot, so now I've got a new front, so I gotta have 25 on that too. Cause that, if I put a public road in there, it creates a public, creates a corner, so I have to have a front, front.
Setbacks. You're talking setbacks.
Yeah, it's a corner lot.
Right, so I don't, so it's not a 10-foot side setback, it's a 20-foot.
Minimum 25 in a C, in an R1 district.
So, and my minimum lot width is 80, right?
Yes.
Right.
So.
But I know what you're saying on two front yards, one rear and one side.
Right.
I get all that, but I was just, we can't, we can't really circumvent the rules of width, right, on any lots within the R1 district?
Within the R1?
It's 80-foot minimum.
It, right.
Right, with 12,000 square foot.
Right.
Minimum lot size.
Right.
And he's worked that all out to be pretty tight too.
Right.
Okay. Go back and say why you lose two again. I gotta hear this.
I have 80 plus 30, which would be 110, right? And then I have to give 60 back for the right-of-way. So I don't, the remainder doesn't have enough to create a lot.
So that's one lot.
So two lots is gonna be 80 plus, uh, what's actually, the corner lots are, uh, 90, corner lots have to be 90 feet wide. So I need 90 plus 60 plus 90 in order to put two houses plus the public road through.
I have a question. I don't know if I'm speaking out of bounds here, but there's a benefit for this development to go in for the water, right? As far as looping. I'll just go anyway. Yes.
Yep.
Yeah, we all agree to that. I would agree to that.
Is it, could the township negotiate the cost of the safety path in lieu of to let him, uh, so he eliminates a lot to make that wider? I mean, he's given up a lot. Can you negotiate, can the township negotiate the safety path monies in lieu of because he's sacrificing a lot?
I can't answer that question.
Yeah, I don't.
I don't think we can start bargaining in.
Well, I'm just asking the question, is that possible?
If it was a PUD, you have bargaining value that you can work with, but on a site condominium, no. I would say no, you can't. There isn't room for that when it doesn't comply to the actual ordinance requirements.
And then if a lot is less than 80 feet?
No, I'm saying he just gives up a lot.
I, I, I get what John just explained on two corner lots.
Right.
He's tied on, he's got nine and 10. Let me look at this thing.
Do each lot have to have its own variance, or would it be variance for?
So right now, you got 27 with 18-inch curbs on each side going through the subdivision.
Yes, sir.
To meet county standards, that's why you did it. Cause you wanna be able to make sure the county will take it over. That's why you met their standard.
Correct.
Otherwise, they wouldn't take it over if it didn't meet. And that's why you're saying, because now they become corner lots. Um, I guess, here's, Lauren, let me, let me ask this in some awkward way. Not that we can approve it, but if they're corner lots, and because everything on this street, and I look at, and I've looked at a lot of, of houses and how they sit on properties, subdivisions and such in the past. If I were to drive down the street, I would think the front yard of all these homes are gonna be, whatever this street becomes named, let's just call it named A, on A Street when I come down through here, that all my houses are gonna be setting back approximately 40 feet according to the documents that were submitted to me. My building envelope is not 25, it's, the house is actually set back 40.
From the road, correct.
Yes, sir. So even if that was a road, and you have to be, meet the required setbacks of that house, I would rather grant two variances for the setbacks of those two homes on that front yard setback and get my roadway, so they didn't have to meet the setback of what you're talking about, because the fronts are all gonna look like the fronts of all the other houses as we come around that road. So it would be a roadway, but it doesn't have any other homes at front on that roadway. It's like when you go into a typical subdivision, you got other houses at front on it. That's why the house has to be kicked back so that meets both those front yard setbacks when you look and view down that roadway. This would not have that, because you wouldn't have any other houses on that roadway going out to Drainer. I would wanna know if we could then send something to the variance board to kick back and give variances for those setbacks on that, so he doesn't have to give up those lots, and we can get that road right-of-way down through there without him having to go and meet that requirement that he just talked about, why he has to kick out two lots instead of one.
Well.
That's what I'm trying to find out.
Thank you.
I know it's awkward, cause we don't have the right to say this.
It, right. Well, and I will say, if, I mean, if you are talking about moving the access points to a corner, as it currently stands, it is not at a corner. So the, if you were to move, if you were to get rid of lot nine, you would, you could fit a road there by, by removing one lot.
Cause 10 becomes a corner lot. Yeah, she, I, I'm with the, I'm with that whole concept. I get it all. I'm just trying to say that I would be more willing to grant a variance for front yard setbacks from corner lots.
And two lots.
Than, and I said lots.
I'm with you.
Yeah.
What would be the width of those two?
And then give up the road right-of-way width. So that's, that's me. I, but I don't know that we have the ability to do that as a planning.
The ZBA has to grant that variance.
Yeah, I know. But could we seek and get that ahead of time for this property? Is that something that could be done? I mean, I don't know. Can we make a recommendation as such that that would have to be sought out and granted? And if it was granted, then we could move forward with this whole development and that process?
You're saying you would take out nine? Would eight remain the same?
Yeah, eight would not be touched at all.
Only 10, correct?
Well, I don't know how it works out. I'd have to do some math.
All 80, 20.
And John would have to do some math.
20 and 30 is 50.
But do you see what I'm saying, John? If you could get a variance from those setbacks to the corner properties?
Theoretically, yeah.
Theoretically, it could work.
Right.
Theoretically, we could make it work mathematically.
Cause you got 20 extra.
Yeah, it's just, I, I.
But you'd, but you'd have to grant two variances on two lots. That's what, they would have to be front yard variances granted on two pieces of property. Not to the south of the lots, which would be the south portion of that property, nine and 10.
Right, we, we.
But to the east and west of lots, nine.
You may, you may, you may need one variance. You may not. It depends. I think that there would still be room for, for a front yard setback on that. Yeah.
If he had a corner lot. I know exactly what's going on here.
Right.
Okay. Well, you know, we've got the water main coming in, that's how many feet? 20 feet?
Oh, at the other section?
Yeah.
That's just an easement.
That's just an easement though, which is not actually taking property.
It's, it's not even taking property away. It's just an easement.
The 30 feet that they have for the safety path.
That's actually taken right out.
Yeah.
That 30 feet, that width is taken right out as part of the, uh, the lot is not even connected to that.
The water main is just an easement on the 80-foot lots.
The water main is strictly an easement across the property. It has a utility easement. The same way you have stormwater utilities and electrical utilities and all the rest, right?
What are you left with at the end of the day on lots nine and 10? You're going, they're both 80 feet. Are they gonna go down to 50? Are they gonna go down to 60? What, what, at the end of the day, what are you gonna have to sell for?
You'd lose 10 feet off each one, right?
Well, I need to, at, at minimum, I would need to be 80-foot to maintain the minimum lot width.
If you got the variance, is what I was saying. If, if we took this idea.
The variance would be from going to a 90-foot lot in order to provide a 20-foot front on this, on the new corner.
No, it would be the opposite. It's not going to a larger lot. It would be decreasing the setback, is what it would.
Oh, I'm sorry, you're right.
You would still have an 80-foot lot.
So in lieu of going to a 90-foot lot, I'd have an 80-foot lot. So 80 would be the minimum lot I could do.
Setback instead of.
I'm just trying to see if there's a possibility to grant the difference in the setback.
I'd rather re-circle back to the EVA.
I know what you'd rather do.
What is?
I'm, I'm just being, I have to ask the question.
What'd you, I didn't hear what you said.
I'd like to circle back to the, how do we make the EVA work?
But I'm still confused in lot nine and 10. If you were to put a, a standard road through there, you would lose real estate on nine and 10. What would the lot width be on nine and 10? You couldn't do it.
The ordinance doesn't allow for it.
If the ordinance allowed for it, what would we, you be left with at the end of the day?
It doesn't allow for it. He's right. I mean.
Oh.
Oh, well, the, that would be a, we need a 60-foot right-of-way, so we would have, we would take 15 feet away from each lot. So 65 feet.
Because you don't wanna give up a lot.
If, if we did a 60-foot right-of-way without touching nine and 10, just by reducing both sides of nine and 10.
If you took a lot out, you don't have no, you don't have any difficulty, right?
Correct.
That's why I asked.
One through eight, some of the others.
That's why.
That's.
I, I said that earlier too, but see, we, that doesn't comply to the ordinance.
We need to change that ordinance.
We need to change that ordinance.
No, no, no. It's zoned R1, I didn't zone it. We're not changing the zoning, no, it's, it's not a PUD.
No, I'm just saying, the future, that should be something that's not-
Under an R1?
In the town, it's hard to fill homes. Or, you can get 80 a lot, 10 for a half.
I get all that, too. I, I certainly don't like 50-foot wide lots, and some communities have those, and they have 60. And I don't appreciate, I've lived on one of those before in my life, and I'm, you know, so I have to go backwards, but-
How did you know it was a little lake?
If you're going to, you've got to come up to the lectern if you're going to address, nobody can hear you going back and forth, so.
We can have that off.
He's going to let John talk. I'm, I have to ask the question, if it can be done or not, and that's why I had, I have to ask if a lot can be given up, because if a lot was given up, it can be done.
Correct.
It can be done.
Yes, if it could.
Yeah, I know it can. Okay. Because that determines how I may vote.
Correct.
Okay.
Alright. Anything else, Commissioners?
See, it makes it pretty tough, doesn't it?
Yeah. It's addressed in the planning letter.
It is in the planning letter, in Lauren's letter? Yeah, I put a star by it.
So if you gave a preliminary site plan approval, it would still have to be addressed before it came to final. Correct?
But, but are we beating a dead horse up then? I don't want to, you know, I don't like to mislead a petitioner.
Nope.
And I'm not going to vote yes once and then turn around and vote no next, that's not fair.
You're asking me to vote, I'm asking a question.
Well, support, I guess, I should have said support on issue. I, I don't like to, uh-
He, he has two choices.
Lose the lot or don't do it. No.
Lose the lot or go pass variances on other ones and sort things out.
Lose the lot or don't do it. That's what I'm hearing.
Is that, is that what you heard?
That's what I, that's what you just said. Lose the lot or don't do it. You're not going to lead them down a path.
I don't want to mislead someone.
Then lose the lot or don't do it.
I'd rather lose the lot.
What's your flavor?
I think 49 lots would be a nice development. I'd be, I would even consider the boulevard entrance, but it doesn't work out, there's just not enough room to do it. It doesn't, that idea doesn't fly. I would, would have considered that too, but it doesn't fly. Orville Wright's not here tonight.
So, I, I hear what you're saying, and of course, we don't want to give up a lot. I would propose maybe that if we could reach an agreement to provide a second public access, would it also be agreeable that we run the path the way we've got it shown? So the path's going to come in on a public road, it'll be a new public sidewalk, rather than do the in lieu of or whatever else for the safety path?
That was my proposal in the very beginning. I said I'd be willing to work with a path as it is done to give me the access by taking a lot out.
We would be agreeable to that.
You would be agreeable to that?
Yes.
Can the planning commission?
I don't think we can make deals.
We can make a recommendation, is all we can do.
Well, then the, well, I-
To waive, to, for what? To waive?
I know what he just said.
Show the path as shown.
Well, he's saying he's, he's willing to do the, eliminate a path, uh, excuse me, let me, let me back up, I want to say this correctly. Your willingness is to give up a lot, as long as you could make the path in the same design criteria as it is done on the plan in lieu of contributing to the safety path fund.
Correct.
I think I said that clearly.
Much better than I did, quite honestly.
Okay. But I don't know-
Isn't that basically what I said earlier?
Yeah.
I would, I would word it differently, but-
But I had to say it that way, because that's the way it's being described.
It's a compromise, he's getting at.
Right.
I get it. I don't know, he's got a safety path on there through the subdivision, it's five-foot wide and it's concrete. I think we're allowed to put five-foot wide concrete in for a safety path, right?
Nope, nope.
We're not?
No.
Oh, I didn't know that, sorry. I'm so used to hearing something from somewhere else.
Eight-foot concrete, or eight-foot concrete you can put down.
Oh, it could be eight-foot concrete instead of five, but that'd be into the yard.
Into the yard.
Well, they got a distance between, there's a green belt between the road curb and the, and the sidewalk. Now, I don't know what the distance is, maybe it's, eh.
Could they get a variance for the five-foot versus the eight-foot?
Lauren? We're, we're negotiating in a sense, I mean, I don't know, there's a lot of, I hate granting variances on a site plan.
I agree, and I guess my wording would be slightly different. No, because if you can find a way to work it out to create the second entrance and you still get your 50 lots, I'm good with that. I'm more, I'm more worried about the second entrance, and if you could figure out a way and you want to go get a variance, I would support that, but that's your decision. Right? So I would word it slightly different, saying if we're going to approve it, that it has to have the second entrance. However, the, the petitioner decides to do that is up to you.
I like that. Did you hear that, Lauren?
No.
Oh, Mr. Spiz, would you repeat that, please?
I said I would word it slightly different, that we would, for approval of a preliminary site plan, we would require a second entry. Egress, egress. However, the petitioner decides to do that is up, is up to them. If they decide to go and ask for a variance for a couple lots to get there or eliminate a lot, that is totally their decision, not for us to say. But we want the second entrance as part of the-
I can support that idea, just to move this on.
Correct.
Absolutely, and that is qualified by, by including the planner's report, unresolved items in the planner's report.
Okay. It is?
Yeah.
As to how they want to get there?
Yeah.
Yeah, I could, I could support that with the idea that then they have to come back and present something to us.
Right, it's up to them to determine that, and they could, they could come back at final site plan, and they, they run the risk at final site plan that you may say that's not satisfactory, we need to see something else.
That's why I don't like to mislead, that's why I was trying to say that earlier.
Right, or they could go to the ZBA and-
And seek to get a variance.
Right. Before final.
Okay, well, that's what, the way Mr. Spiz said it is fine with me.
Okay.
No, I didn't hear what is fine. From the preliminary site plan and keeping in what the planner's letter states.
That they will create a second access point, and they will-
And that's the planner letter.
The, the second-
In accordance with the planner's comments.
Right, as well as the safety path.
Comments.
Those are, are both referenced in my letter.
And concerned.
Okay, so they'll figure that out at that.
It's up to them, yeah.
Yeah, I could go with that.
Here we go. I move that the planning commission approve the preliminary site plan for the Woods of Tullamore Site Condominium, parcel ID 04-35-200-004, zoned R1, single-family resident applicant, Trident Crest 3 LLC. This recommendation of approval is based upon the following findings. The finals, the final site plan is consistent with township ordinances and approved preliminary site plan. Further, the recommendation of approval is conditioned upon the following. One, any unresolved items contained within the township planner's review dated April 4th, 2019. Number two, any unresolved items contained within the township engineer's review dated March 29th, 2019. End of motion.
No support for discussion.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Curtis, seconded by Mr. Spiz. Is there discussion on the motion?
I guess, just for clarification, the second entry point, that we talked, is it clear in the planner's report that it's required to have it?
Yes.
Yes.
Can you please?
It, it says applicant shall-
I believe you, but I'd like to see it.
It says applicant shall include a second access point or seek a variance from ZBA. That's what the planner originally said. Excuse me, the zoning administrator.
Item number two.
Sorry.
Page five.
Any other questions or discussion on the motion? Mr. Curtis?
I want to amend my motion, and I want to add the, any unresolved items contained within the Oxford Fire Department letter dated April 2nd, 2019.
That's good, you included that.
Yep. Can you re- amend your support?
I re- amend my support.
Okay.
Any other discussion on the amended motion?
No, other than, I just, from my point of view, what we discussed, and because of some of the things that are happening, for the future benefit of all the residents in the community for this looping system of the water main and such, and working with the developer in, in that aspect and some of the other components, it's a good plan, it's a good idea, and I'm supportive on it. I just, I just want to make sure it gets, all the details get worked out to where we're all on the same page on how this should go down.
Right.
Okay, I'll, I'll be able to support that.